I'm fine.
I know you are.
It is.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. How are you?
Excellent, thank you.
Oh, Mark's not gonna...well, Mark may not be here.
Yeah, take...you can take Mark's because I don't think he'll...
I got that shot, too.
Pretty good chance.
No Mark, no Dana.
Hey, that...I've just put one up here just in case somebody else...thank you.
She want beer.
Oh, really? Do we need to spotlight?
Sure, but fan. Jacqueline said she got to meet Teddy.
Yes. He almost came tonight, but I didn't know how long he'd be here.
This would have been a great spot for him to be.
I know, I put inside. That may be Monday.
That would be a good one, too.
Yeah. Yeah, she says, "Oh, the lady brought this big dog in and he's so cute." I'm like, "That's Teddy."
Yeah.
Yeah, Glenda requested that we just stop by weekly at Central Office.
I think it's a good idea.
Might have to add that to our route.
I need to see what we could do with some of our head startups.
Oh, yeah.
Because that would be a cool...
That would be fun.
Yeah, the kids would love it.
I would like that. Teddy would like that.
He's just as big as some of them. Some of those little ones are not any bigger than he is.
And it's funny, because my other nupies are the same way. The smaller the kid, the more gentle they would be, like they'd lay down right away.
Which is cool, yeah. That's really cool.
I just heard back from Mark, he is out of town. And Dr. Hannigan is gonna be here.
Do you want to scoot over one so there's not a big hole?
Uh...yeah, I guess I could. Yes, sir. We're good.
Hey, Jennifer.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. Yep, how are you?
Good, thank you, awesome. Get out of the heat.
Yeah, I haven't been out in it much today, but it's windy and that makes me grumpy. I'm glad it didn't blow all summer like it does some years. It's actually kind of nice to be in Central. I swear I'm not sitting out this meeting right now. Oh, I know.
How are you?
Hello, how are you?
Good. Uh, they're having me do microphone tests for you all. So if you could just go ahead and talk into your microphone until it's a comfortable volume for you.
Okay. Forget real quick. Test one, two, three. Test one, two, three.
You have a microphone free, I believe?
Does that work? Test one, two, three. Does that work?
Raise it up. Try again.
Test one, two, three.
You're good, Beth.
I keep wanting to...
Yeah. I want the wheels.
How come I don't get wheels?
Test one, two, three.
My turn. Sure. Test, test, one, two, three.
I'm one of those kids that needs the little...
Test.
I need...
Yeah, I do, too.
Mr. Wallace, would you be so kind to test your microphone for me, please?
Test, test, test.
Uh...give me one more test, though.
Test.
Okay, you're good. All right, Ms. Rafferty, do you mind?
Test. Test one, two, three.
Try talking to me years ago.
Testing, hello?
Test one, two, three.
Can you guys hear her okay?
If you need me to act, use either my lawyer voice or my mother voice. Which one would you prefer?
Test one, two, three. Test.
I know, right?
Mind your kind words to hear to test our system real quick?
Test, test.
Test, test.
Check number three.
You got one here. Test, one, two, three. Okay. Better? Not on? There it is, right here. Does that work? Okay. My eyes are gonna cross, but you can hear me. That's what we have to do in court.
Test, test. Can you guys hear me? Yes?
Hear that one? They're getting ready. Can you hear me now? Little? Test, test. I can pretend it. Use that teacher voice. I call it my arena voice. That's the even louder one. Use my mother voice. Yeah, that's the next...that one sounds angry, though, when I use it. Test, one, two, three. Okay. I just have to remember to lean forward.
Try it one more time.
One, two, three.
There we go.
Okay. One, two, three. Can't get any closer or I might just put it up against me. Can we just move the stand over?
Yeah, we can also do both. Stand over.
Yeah, I think that's...
Just this there?
It'll be fine. Test, test.
Uh, do you want to try it one more time just to be safe?
Sure. Test, test.
It's starting to get from here. Did we need to check any of the mics?
Test, test.
Do you want to check Dr. Hannigan?
Sure.
Testing, one, two, three. Test, test. Testing, one, two, three. Testing, can you hear me? Test, test. Are you getting any signal from it?
No, I swapped the mic. It's pretty bad.
Okay. Sure. Testing, one, two, three. Test.
If that one doesn't work...
I can swap that microphone, huh? I have extra microphones. Try them from the TV station in case they didn't have them.
Yeah, let's do the...hey, Cam. Hey, Heath.
Testing, one, two, th...
That was on.
That's on. You're good.
Testing, one, two, three.
Nope. You ready for me?
Test, test. Testing, one, two, three.
Okay. So they are saying you can move it down there, but I can also...
Um, yeah, just over here. Just this one over here.
Okay, yeah, that works for you.
Thank you.
Sorry, folks, it worked three times earlier.
Don't worry, it's technology, right?
Only good as long as it works. Testing, one, two. Can everybody hear this okay? Sounds pretty good.
Does that one...
We ready?
Yes. Test, one, two, three. Test.
Yeah, probably a little closer when you talk. Test. Buddy, can you hear me in the back? Yep, okay.
Oh, sorry, Tim. Mr. Hogan, are we ready?
You're back in jail.
Uh, it's 5:30. I'd like to call tonight's Board of Education meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I rem...I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Uh, motion's been made by Janine. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Jennifer, thank you. Okay, moving on into public comments section of our deal.
We need to vote.
I'm sorry, thank you. I get a little hair. All in the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, same side. Moving on. I'd like to welcome to you, you guys, to tonight's board meeting. This year, our school system and other school districts in Kansas and across the country are working hard to keep students in school, uh, have schools as normally as possible and keep students and staff safe. There's been a great deal of discussion about the best ways to accomplish this for our students. Much of that discussion has centered around requiring face masks in school. There are valid and differing opinions on this issue. Tonight, the USD 457 Board of Education had a meeting for a board retreat in our regular schedule. It seemed appropriate to use this time to allow district stakeholders the opportunity to share information they felt important on the issue with the board. So the time will be used as follows. Speakers have registered in advance, so thank you to those who are here tonight to address the board. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. I will call each registered speaker, one person at a time. Please come forward and use the microphone in the aisle. I believe it's right down in front to my right. I would ask each speaker to introduce themselves when they begin. I will signal by raising my hand when you have 30 seconds remaining with the yellow card. I will ask each speaker to conclude their remarks if they reach the time limit and have not finished. I will hold up the stop sign. If speakers have written any written materials they would like the board to have, please give them to Mr. Loach, the clerk of the board. She will pass them out. If there is only one copy, she will compile those and send them, send those information out to the board tomorrow. The board will not be responding to the speaker's comments tonight. The board is not planning on taking any action tonight. We are just here to listen. No decisions will be made tonight. Our first speaker is Leah Strecker. Leah Strecker? It's hard to see out there in the crowd, so you might have to say present.
First off, thank you guys for having us speak. I really appreciate that. It's nice to be able to get our voices out there. Um, my, my for, my opinion of this is I'm speaking in, um, wanting to keep the choices with the parents, so my, um, my wish or my, what I would like to see happen is that you do continue with making masks optional. I am in favor of those choices being with the parents. I feel that is super important and our right to be able to make the health choices and medical decisions for our kids. It's not a concept. It's not a crazy new way of thinking. It's actually our right as a parent. It's called medical autonomy. I'm sure we've all heard of medical autonomy. If you haven't, it's the right to make a decision about a medical care without a professional influencing that decision. So what this means is it, we, we cannot be forced to take on a medical or health choice. I cannot go into a place and be forced to...I can't go into the doctor. I can be allowed to be given their medical recommendations. I can be allowed to obviously be educated and heard, but I have the right to get to make that medical choice or health choice for myself or for my child. That's what I'm asking. That's my platform. I feel like where there's risk, there must be a choice. I know you guys stand at a really hard choice trying to make everybody happy. I feel like, like you said, there's valid points two and four. I really don't want to discuss that because I feel like that has been out there to its end. I don't know how we ever come to a common ground on that. Where I do feel like we need to remember is that we, as parents, do have rights for our kids. And our rights should be those health and medical choices being given. A lot of things, you know, that I'm hearing and saying, you know, is in regards to no masks, I'm, I'm not necessarily saying no mask, don't mask, you know, whatever. I'm just saying we, as the parents, have the right to make those health and medical choices for our kids. I cannot imagine any one of us ever wanting to have those medical rights taken away from our kids, and that's how it feels. You know, we are out here, you know, here in this anti-mask, anti, you know, whatever. I am not anti-mask. I promise you, I am not anti-mask. I don't really know that I'm anti-anything. I feel like we all have the right to get to make our informed choice and our educated choice on our kids, and that's all I'm asking. I mean, basically, I feel like I'm asking for the rights to own what happens to my body, and that's bizarre to me, but that's what I'm asking, for the rights to be able to own my body and be able to make the decisions for myself and my kids. Angry anti-maskers, I don't really feel like we are. I just feel like we backed up into a corner. I feel like we, as parents, have been, the choice to what we do for our kids is taken away, and that's scary. And I do not mean that as a negative effect. I mean it as, please hear me and please listen to me, when I'm an educated person, these people have had a whole year to educate themselves on what this is, but what they want to do and the health choices that they want to make for their kids, and I feel like that's super valid. And, yeah, we just, we want to be heard, and we do not want those health choices taken away from us to be able to make to our kids. I, I'm not sure if you guys know or if anybody of you do know, last year, we took our kids out of USD 457, all four of them, took them out, um, out of the school. We loved you guys. We loved the school. We loved the administrators. We loved staff. We loved teachers. I stink and love the secretaries at our schools. I love this school. I took them out of the school district because honestly, I did not feel like the school board was listening to the majority. I didn't feel like we were being listened to as a whole. I did not feel like our needs or our wants were listened to, but I also felt like my rights were taken away, my rights as a parent. So we did, we pulled them out. We put them in different schools. Thank you. Put them in different schools, and they thrived, and they're still thriving. You have two that are never coming back. I have a junior, and I'm not proud of that. I have a junior and a freshman last year, and I can tell you their differences in school years were awful. My junior thrived it fine, great. My freshman didn't even want to go to school. It's my straight A honors class, has great friends, loved school, and she didn't even want to go to school here anymore. I want that to be different, not because my kids will be in here. I've got one who wants to come back, but I want it different for all the kids because I love this community. I love this school. I want it to be best.
Thank you. Next, Tiffany Harmon.
So, hi, my name's Tiffany Harmon, and I am a mother in the community, and I'd like to thank you for giving this opportunity to come and address you guys tonight. So I guess my question to all of you is, why are we here? Why are we still debating this issue? This is not March 2020 anymore. We have so many more belts, tools in our belt, and we know so much more than we did back then. Over the past 18 months, we've heard medical experts, nurses, doctors, scientists from around the country speak out against masks, using their own data, their own cases, and their own research to back those facts. We know that masks are not effective against respiratory viruses. I have a stack full of literature right here that proves that, even a study from Stanford University. This knowledge is based on several studies, um, basically the virus particle size. I feel like we have to keep going over this because the data and the facts are not hitting home with why the, why masks are recommended. The fact that the general public hasn't been trained in proper PPE use, um, the general material that face masks are made out of, cloth masks are not effective. That virus goes in and out. If you'd like, um, some more sources, um, here's a list, about 40, from England to our own World Health Organization about why masks are not effective. We know COVID-19 infections rarely start with children. They do not readily acquire SARS-CoV-2. They are very low risk. They are often asymptomatic and have mild symptoms, and their infections are not long-lived. Um, we have, um, children have found, been found not to be the source of transmission based on several studies, again, in this packet. The American Pediatric Association put out a study, it doesn't start with children. We know that there is little to no asymptomatic spread, again, in this packet you guys will get. We do know now, however, there are risks and severe, long-term and short adverse, short-term adverse health effects that come from prolonged mask use. First is carbon dioxide level, a condition called hypercapnia. Many of the complaints from our children about wearing a mask comes from exposure to carbon dioxide. How many times did our kids come home last year complaining of headaches? They were lethargic or had brain fog, just to name a two, a few. We now know there's a condition called mask-induced exhaustion syndrome. I have a paper in here that goes into that in detail. I would recommend that every parent on both sides reads this paper because it goes into and it explains explicitly what these risks are. Some of the risks include, one or a combination of, uh, breathing dead space volume, increase in breathing resistance, increase in, uh, increase in, decrease in blood oxy, oxygen saturation, in, increase in blood carbon dioxide, increase in heart rate, increase in blood pressure, decrease in cardiopulmonary capacity, increase in respiratory rate, shortness of breath and difficulty breathing, headache, dizziness, feeling hot and clammy, decreased ability to concentrate, decreased ability to think, drowsiness, decrease in empathy perception, impaired skin barrier function based on itching, acne, skin lesions, irritation, overall perceived fatigue and exhaustion. These, this information wasn't available to us back then. It is now. These masks are causing health problems and risks for our children. So basically, what I want to say is, you're telling us to trust the data, trust the facts, trust the science, trust the doctors, but it's really, what's really being said is trust your science, your data, your doctors, your facts. Why is it that I have to make my decisions for my child based on one side of the story? I have the right as a parent to hear all sides, do my own research, use my own discernment, and then make the best choice for my child. I am not saying that Matt, there is no, there's not a time and place for a mask, but forcing our children to wear them five days a week for seven hours a day, it's not only inhumane, it's child abuse. I have... I have read both sides, and for me as a parent, I've decided that the risk of prolonged mask-wearing far outweighs the risk of their risk of having the virus. I have the right to make that choice. You are making a decision based in fear, not facts. Children have a, have a higher risk for the flu. We have never gone to such lengths for anything, including, including that, so why are we doing this for a virus with a 99.7% survival rate? We cannot allow, we cannot allow these children to carry the burden that was ours, was never theirs to carry anyway. We are, we have forced them to make a choice on them with no conclusive scientific data or study that proves that we are helping stop this virus. We ask, we put this choice on them and ask them to think it's like we're giving them a gift, when the only gift that we're giving them is phobia, depression, fear, anxiety, and increase in suicide and suicide attempts. We have destroyed an entire generation of children. We have made them afraid to question authority, seek facts, to stick up for themselves. We've delayed their development and their education. I have more, but thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kent Williams?
Good evening. My name is Kent Williams, and I'm a Garden City resident and a proud father of, father of two children attending USD 457 schools, a junior who's currently enrolled virtually, and a fourth grader attending school in person. I'm here this evening to speak in favor of adopting mask-wearing indoors where social distancing cannot be achieved anywhere in and on USD 457 grounds. I'd like to thank the Board of Education for taking the time for stakeholders to voice their thoughts and opinions concerning the current public health crisis. Even though I am not a virologist, immunologist, pathologist, scientist, or any sort of doctor, or have any expertise to offer the board, I greatly appreciate your time. As we watch other states, some have been back to school since July. I feel local school board meetings have become fault lines where people feel like they can maybe fight back against normal slipping away. I feel this enormous disconnect between the school year, school boards wanted to have, parents expected to have, and the reality of this new wave of the Delta variant. We have entered a heavy stage of public fatigue after building momentum during the last school year, which carried through spring and early summer. Dealing with precautions, isolation, getting the vaccine, whatever degree people decided to take it seriously is now pretty much over. As folks began to get fully vaccinated, recommendations from the CDC changed. We saw transmission rates begin to fall. Folks began going out to eat in restaurants, catching movies, and occasionally seeing some friends, things they hadn't done in months or over a year. some friends, things they hadn't done in months or over a year. We, we're having a back-to-normal moment and what a potent feeling that was. Over the last month, we've seen the effects of the Delta variant has caused school districts in Mississippi and Florida with COVID-19 protocols that are similar to our own. It's been a massive collision of the dream people may-wanted schools to look like and the daunting reality of rising caseloads. An entire Mississippi school district is going virtual after Pearl River, Pearl River Central High School in Carrere, Mississippi ordered 40% of its student body to quarantine just after one week of school. Classes there began on August 5th with no mask mandates. The high school quarantined around 394 members of its roughly 1,000-member student body. The caseload map of Mississippi looks like lava. It's hot. There's just significantly more baseline infection than last year. Rapid escalation has called hospitals, caused hospitals in Mississippi and Florida to be five to 10 days from complete hospital failure. We often hear about critical care and ICU bed shortages. It's not really that we don't have enough beds, it's the lack of staff to keep up with the demand. We are pushing our hospital into a similar situation. Over the last month, our hospital has been at a point where it had one or less critical beds available. Soon, electric surgeries won't be available again, like colonoscopy, mammography, things to help us prevent cancer, let alone waiting for hours or possibly being transferred out of state for an allergic reaction or a broken arm. We have to come together as a community and continue slowing the spread and reducing the viral load. I could spend the rest of my time countering talking, talking points of wokeness, being all-knowing, all-wise, parent choice, anecdotal science, from chiropractors, faith over fear, child abuse, the difference between aerosol and gas, there's so much vitriol, so much conspiracy. I could also talk about how meaningless a localized strategy for a virus that doesn't respect borders is, what IGM and IgG antibodies are and how they work, and viral load. The sacrifices my hearing impaired friends like Donnie Kirk make, how important it is for him to be able to read lips. His willingness to wear a mask for the protection of the public health and safety are second to none. His determination to beat the virus is admirable and should be an inspiration to all of us. I could also talk about how erroneous it is to have, to wear a mask on a bus, get off, take the mask off and lock the class with everyone you just rode with. How the district isn't offering remote access for any immunocompromised children or for those with underlying health conditions. Forcing your child to wear a mask when his or her peers and teachers are not required to and subjecting them to bullying, anxiety, and confusion. Whereas if everyone was wearing one, we would all be on an equal playing field. Instead, tonight, I'd like to speak about a US Supreme Court case that I don't believe many of us are familiar with, however, will be relevant in the many months ahead and is, and is so this evening. The case originated in 1902 during a smallpox outbreak. Massachusetts was one of only 11 states that had compulsory vaccination laws. Massachusetts law empowered the Board of Health of individual cities and towns to enforce mandatory free vaccinations for adults over the age of 21, if the municipality determined it was necessary for the public health and safety of the community. Adults who refused were subject to a $5 fine, which was about $150 today. The Board of Health of the city of Cambridge, Massachusetts adopted this regulation ordering the vaccination or revaccination of all of its inhabitants. Cambridge, Massachusetts.
Time. Sorry, Ms. Williams, time. Shelby Hanneman.
My name is Shelby Hanneman. I really appreciate you guys allowing us to come and speak our, our words. Something that another person said, I wanted to hit on real quick first. Last year, last school year, because of the requirement for masks, I pulled my two children out of school because of the same reasons that she mentioned. I felt like the, the idea that a governing body of a school board can choose to force my kid to do something that maybe they don't want to do, maybe I don't want them to do that, just seems really archaic. It seems really, just really bad and honestly evil. So I want to talk real quick about mandate versus choice. And I have three points that I want to hit on. All these points, I did email each of you, these points with the references to the sources for these points. The first point, children are at extremely low risk from COVID. The flu is two and a half times more deadly than COVID for children. Over the year 2019 and 2020, there was more flu deaths in children than there have been in COVID deaths in 18 months. The accuracy of the COVID mortality rate is still at question because the CDC still says that at least 35% of all deaths don't have anything to do with COVID. It's death with COVID. The, the next, the next point is, children are not super-spreaders. In January 2020, the CDC found each student, the infection that each student generated was less than one, it was .77. So that means if a student had it, they weren't spreading it to anybody. Germany did a study of over 400,000 students and their infection rate was .25, meaning that they weren't giving it to anyone, the trend was going down. So, in other words, children are not a, a source or a driver for community transmission. The last point is really the most important point and it goes back to what I said at the beginning, and that is mandate versus choice. There is no data across the board that shows that mandating changes anything. Whether it's mandating that you wear a mask, whether it's mandating you stay at home, it has little effect on the overall rise or falling of numbers. Researchers in Florida, Maryland, and New York found there was no correlation between mandates and COVID cases in, in schools, the rate of COVID cases in schools. The rate of transmission is routinely higher in schools where mask mandates were required. Now that's not to say that the mask caused it, it's just, it's just showing you that if you have a mandate, that's not guaranteeing you that you're going to have lower case So the, the, the study on mandates, yeah, so they, so anyway, the last thing, the last thing, so I have two daughters and one of them's 12 and I'm really excited because she's back in school now. She goes here to Horace Good and, and it blows my mind that I have a middle-schooler and we're dealing with sports and boys and all the things and one of the conversations that I had with both her and her sister was what the word consent means. And so I want to read the definition of the word consent real quick. Consent occurs when one person voluntarily agrees to the proposal or the desires of another. That is not something that you guys get to mandate or get to take away. Consent comes from God. Consent is a natural right. And so that's all I have to say, thank you guys very much. I do, I would really side that you guys let the parents choose, keep the choice with the parents, because that's, overall, that's, that's their right. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanneman. Amy Longa, sorry if I mispronounced that. Is Amy available?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. I'm Amy Longa, a resident here in Garden City for close to 11 years. Why am I here? I'm here to ask that you mandate wearing masks in school and this is why. My reality is, I'm a mother of a four-year-old with pre-existing condition here now going to kindergarten. I am here with my mother who's over 70 years old with a medical pre-existing condition. I'm a mother of five. One of the five is an international student who I'm hosting here in Garden City School District. And that means I have children in four different schools within the district. My husband works in medical field, goes to hospital every day. What do I know? I do know that COVID is real. I do have relatives who passed from medical conditions related to COVID. I do know that the current Delta variant is more contagious compared to the previous that we had. Do I have the choice for my children to wear a mask in school? I really don't and this is why. I'm going to exclude some of my reasons and just give you an example of a story that my five-year-old who started school last week after we came back from Uganda told me. In the past months, we tried very hard within my household to ensure that my mother, who is 70-plus years, is protected. I instilled onto my children the desire, the need, the drive to wear masks for my mother and for my now five-year-old. My little Joshua has always been wearing masks and we did, even when we're traveling internationally. I sent Joshua to school on Thursday, after we came in, he had his mask on. On Friday, I sent him to school, he was wearing his mask. However, on Monday, when I went to pick him up, he didn't have his mask on and I asked, "Hey buddy, what happened? Where's your mask?" He said, "Mom, I'll tell you when we get home." So we had a time to chat a little bit. He asked me, "Mom, why should I wear a mask when the rest of my colleagues at school are not wearing masks? It's weird, feels weird. It is really weird for me to wear a mask, mommy." I ran out of words, I couldn't really explain to him what concerned, why his colleagues are not wearing, why he should wear. Why am I saying that? I'm saying that I really don't have the choice. My little four-year-old has no choice. He is four. Peer pressure is real. The impact of that into a self-esteem of a four-year-old that are on the rest of my kids is real, I'm leaving it. So I'll leave the rest of the story out, but I want you to remember, when you're thinking about choice, when you're thinking about reality, remember in my household, a 70-plus years old with medical condition, my five-year-old, and the element of choice to a five-year-old who asks such a question to a little term mommy, Amy. Thank you for the moment.
Thank you, Amy. H.J. Swinder.
Before I start talking about mandating our kids wear masks in school, I want to ask everyone in here something. When you go to the grocery store, how many adults do you see in masks? How many are choosing to make that unnecessary discomfort for 30 minutes of shopping? Unfortunately, I'd like to point out that the district has invited half of those speaking today to give testimony in favor of masks and half opposed. That might be fair, but as evidenced today, in our markets and in this crowd, it's not representative of our community. Now imagine back to that grocery store, how many people are wearing masks? Very few. We're adults, we're making that decision for ourselves. We've lived with the media scares and changing recommendations for 18 months now. We can weigh the risk for ourselves. We have that opportunity to get a vaccine if we think it'll benefit. Go back to think about the grocery store one more time. The vast majority of adults in Fannie County are not wearing masks, but here we are, the adults of Fannie County deciding whether or not we should make our children wear masks for eight hours. This is insanity, guys. Maybe we reacted out of fear and precaution at the beginning, but let's think rationally now. Children are not at the risk of serious illness or death from COVID, they're not even the super-spreaders like we first thought they are. Because we're afraid of the small portion of the population who continue to choose fear of rationalization. I'm going to talk for, through a few points. First and foremost, masks are not as effective as the CDC wants you to believe. I believe, I have several studies back, as many others have, on people that wore masks and those different. One scientific study says that cloth masks don't work, one says that masks allow enough droplets to pass through the virus. All these are backed by science. Dr. Wallenaski at the CDC and Fauci told Americans that you need to wear a mask even if you're vaccinated. Couple weeks later, CDC flip-flopped and said vaccinated people don't need to wear masks. Now they want us to wear a mask again. The CDC in my book, and I'm sure many others, is on real shaky ground. Masks are not as effective as they want us to believe. If masks were effective, we would see huge discrepancies between states with very different degrees of mask requirements. Hawaii has the most restrictive COVID protocol and the union in mask mandates. However, currently, their infection rates in Hawaii are 48 people per 100,000, whereas Kansas is only 33. Point two, masks are not necessary for our children in schools, otherwise healthy children are not risk of serious illness from COVID. According to the CDC, more children die annually from influenza than they do COVID. Seriously, 361 kids and 17 have died from COVID in the United States, or 361 kids under the age of 17. Let's look at that data in Kansas. 14 children died from COVID. Last year, there's 500,000 school children, so 1 in 35,000 chance. Nationally, 400 out of 75 million. Put that in perspective, 1 out of 200,000. For reference, the odds of being struck by lightning are 1 in 15,000. Or even worse, our children, who, many of them on school buses, 23.5 million children ride the school bus every day, 1 in 17,000 will be hospitalized due to an emergency from a school bus wreck. There's many other factors and dangers out there other than COVID. For comparison, children in 2019 from, died from very preventable causes, 89 from suicide, 43 from homicide, 33 from drug overdose. We need these kids in schools so these social problems don't happen anymore. And locally, here's a statistic that just received today, locally, St. Catherine's had zero pediatric COVID inpatient admissions all year long, but here we are, guys. And I want to be clear, I do have a heart and brain in all this. My family made sacrifices to take precautions early on when we needed to. We kept our kids home from daycare for over three months so they wouldn't spread COVID to my elderly boss and his wife. We weren't worried about our kids getting sick, but we didn't want to be the reason they got sick. We understood the reasons and had heart. But now the vulnerable populations have been vaccinated or they've been getting every opportunity. Kudos to Fannie County, we're the third highest vaccination rate in the state. But this shouldn't burden our kids, it's unnecessary. In conclusion, every teacher, school administrator, support service employee, parent has had the opportunity to be vaccinated. Also, they have the freedoms to choose to wear masks if they want. However, our children are not at serious illness or death risk from COVID. They're 10 times more likely to get hurt from riding the school bus or get sick and die from COVID. But if we pass a mask mandate, some parents will choose to keep their kids out of school rather than sit with a mask with a face all day. The social and educational detriment to the education society we lost over eight months.
Time, Mr. Swinder.
Thank you.
Tammy Riggs.
Good evening, my name is Tamara Riggs and I'm a librarian in the Garden City School District. And I'm here asking that masks be required in all school buildings to protect our staff and students. After two weeks of school being open, August 5th through the 19th, these are the numbers that we're hearing coming from the Fannie County Health Department. When we're looking at the total number of people who have tested positive on August 5th, it was 6,197 and that was up 41 positive tests from their last Monday. Last Monday, August 16th, it rose to 6,348 positive tests and that two-week, that's an increase of 151 people testing positive. When we're looking at the total active cases on August 5th, there were 22. On August 16th, last Monday, there are 183 active cases. Again, in a two-week period, that's 161 active cases. When we were looking at the deaths on August 5th, there were 50. Last Monday, on August 16th, there were 53, but we did get information. But we did get information from the Fannie County Health Department that actually, in that month period from July to this week, there were six deaths. Now, people might think, well, those were elderly people, they may have had some kind of condition that maybe made the COVID cause their death. But if this was a member of your family, one death is one too many. When you're looking at the hospitalizations, on August 5th, there were 13. Last Monday, on the 16th, there were 12. Again, we're not looking at an increase there, but we have to realize that our hospital is struggling right now. We have heard from many people from the hospitals saying this. Again, we're going to be looking at our medical staff going through a lot of physical and mental stress again, just like they did last year. But right now, we're seeing hospitals across Kansas and across our country that are also at critical. And if we have ill people from COVID or other things, we can't send them to those hospitals because they will not accept those people anymore. So we're going to run into a problem. Where do we send these ill people? Positivity rate on August 5th was 16.28%. Last Monday, August 16th, it was 29%. So in two weeks, it was an increase of 13%. And as you've heard from a previous speaker, we've seen in the news, 8,000 Florida students in the Tampa area are in isolation or quarantine right now, and their schools also have not been open for very long. Houston schools this week reported 40% more COVID cases in a one-night period. Atlanta schools have reported 3,000 COVID cases in their schools. We don't want to see these surges in Garden City and find ourselves with no hospitals to send these people to, back to remote and virtual learning, and also people and doctors under a lot of stress and nurses. Please, it is time to discuss masks be required in our schools before school staff and children get sick and possibly die. Because as a teacher, again, one teacher death is one too many, and one of my students' deaths is one too many. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Brian Clark.
It's Byron, B-Y-R-O-N. But thank you. USC 457 Board Members, District Leadership, thank you for letting us be here tonight. My name is Byron Clark. I am a sixth-grade teacher here in Garden City School District. This is my third year with the district. I will say you guys have done a great job going through from the beginning until now. So thank you for inviting us to give feedback. I'm here tonight in support of the current guidelines that were passed in July that make masks optional in the choice of the individual, especially the parent. And I encourage you to uphold that decision you made, because I know it was not made, you know, just on a whim. We are no longer in March 2019 where we had no idea, or March 2020, my apologies, what we were dealing with today. Today, everyone has access to receiving a vaccine if they desire and choose to get one. Various studies, and I can send them to you, but I'm sure you're going to get bombarded with them, show that children use young adults that are really not affected by COVID-19 or its variants in severe ways unless there are pre-existing underlying conditions. Our district has done a great job throughout the past year and a half dealing with the constantly changing information and recommendations. As a teacher, I can tell you, it was very chaotic at times. However, we made it work. We have been living normal lives in southwest Kansas and really across this country since May. There is absolutely no reason to start, quote, "mandating masks" again. Our families, individual teachers and staff, know what is best for their life. We want to wear, if you want to wear a mask, if you want to wear a mask, I support it. If you want to not wear a mask, I support that as well. I do not support forcing children, families, or staff to be masked. Now, to address the gentleman, I'm so glad he shared about his hearing-impaired adult individual who does wear a mask. That is awesome. That said, I do have two hearing-impaired students this year. Hearing-impaired individuals rely on being able to see the faces and facial expressions of those around them to communicate and participate with us. When we mask our kids and staff, we are forcing the isolation of students who rely on open faces to communicate and be engaged with their teachers and peers. Yes, teachers have face shields. They are only for the teachers, so that our hearing-impaired students may, quote, "see" our faces. However, the rest of the students, their friends, are masked. This is unethical, it is discriminatory, and it is unfair. Right now, in education, the term, quote, "equity" is being thrown around all the time. It's the hottest new subject. Equity means equal outcome. Yes, it is a form of Marxism, and for some reason, we have decided that the outcome of all is all that supposedly matters. My question is regarding equity. How is silencing and isolating some of our students from being able to communicate with their classmates and teachers, quote, "equitable" or "ethical"? There is no need to force extreme mandates anymore. Cases are not deaths. Viruses are a part of life. Fear is a choice. We are in a position today where we know what we are facing, and we are capable of making our own decisions. Virtue signaling is becoming quite tiresome. Believe us, some teachers, we just want to teach the kids the content that has been approved. Controlling others, controlling others is not the American way. The current mask optional guidelines work for all individuals. They work for all students, families, teachers, and staff. We have staff that wear masks, students that wear masks, and those who don't, and we all get along. We are being neighborly, we are being kind, we are being loving. And so I ask all of you today to continue to be courageous and let individuals continue to choose whether or not they want to wear a mask in school. And with that, I would like to add, there is a real crisis that we are facing, and it is providing an education to our students that lets them achieve and succeed in amazing ways. I am so thankful that our district goal is to get all children at grade level by 2024. And so I hope that as a school board, you will address the educational and knowledge gap in our district just as hard and with urgency as you have with the so-called continued COVID-19 crisis.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Lindley Anderson, teacher-librarian at Charles Stone's Intermediate Center. I am speaking tonight on behalf of a colleague. Hello, my name is Hallie Cristelen. I teach computer keyboarding at Charles Stone's Intermediate Center. This is my third year teaching in Garden City and my fifth year as a teacher. My husband and I are transplants from eastern Kansas. This is his fifth year teaching at Garden City Community College. We have one daughter, who is two and a half, and another daughter on the way, due on Christmas. I want to thank my colleague and friend Lindley Anderson for agreeing to read this letter on my behalf. I am writing this letter to implore the Board of Education to make the decision to require masks for all staff and students in the district. My goal today is to unite us on one commonality, and that's that kids should be in school. We know that in-person learning is the most effective way for children to learn. For many students, school is a safe place. We know a great deal of our students rely on us for at least two of their three meals per day. Evidence currently suggests the number of young people suffering from mental health issues is rising. Interacting with others is how kids learn social skills. I want our schools to remain open as long as it is safe. The question we must ask ourselves is what can we do to ensure that students stay in school? To me, the answer is clear. We need a mask mandate. Disregarding recommendations put forth by highly-regarded entities is a dangerous route. Currently, the CDC recommends everyone in K-12 schools wear a mask indoors, including teachers, staff, students, and visitors regardless of vaccination status. Randy Weingartner, President of the American Federation of Teachers, has argued for masking in schools due to the low vaccine rates in some communities and the fact that children under 12 are not yet eligible for the vaccine. The American Academy of Pediatrics released updated guidance for schools recommending all students over two years old, along with staff, wear masks regardless of vaccination. And the World Health Organization also recommends masks. I personally trust doctors and epidemiologists who have been studying infectious diseases for decades. According to USA Today, on August 17th, cases and hospitalizations among children are on the rise, and the highly-contagious Delta variant of the coronavirus makes up about 90% of new infections among kids. A Forbes article published on August 4th stated COVID cases among children jumped 84% the previous week. We can see what is happening in states where vaccination rates are low and mask mandates are non-existent. More than 10,000 students and staff in Hillsborough County Public Schools in Florida have been isolated or quarantined, and 20,000 students are quarantining across Mississippi. Last week, 13-year-old eighth-grader Michaela Robinson became the fifth child in Mississippi to die of COVID-19, and only one day after being diagnosed with the virus. Schools in Texas counties have already shut down because of a shortage of staff members. And what do we have in common with these districts around the country? The lack of a mask mandate. This morning, today, at 2:30 a.m., CNN reported that according to the CDC, nearly 93% of the U.S. population lives in an area with high COVID-19 transmission. Dr. Paul Offit, a member of the FDA Vaccine Advisory Committee, is quoted saying, "You have two weapons here. One is a vaccine, the other is masking. And for children less than 12, that's the only weapon they have." In Fannie County, our vaccination rate is only 42%, with nine current hospitalizations, and as of Monday, a 29% overall positivity rate. That same positivity rate, broken down into 0- to 9-year-olds, was 44%, and among 10- to 19-year-olds was 36%. Aside from drastically increasing the vaccination rate of all eligible peoples in the county, our only other option to attempt slowing and decreasing these numbers is to get the schools and community to wear masks. Garden City Community College updated their mask policy. USC 457 should follow suit. Claims about masks being unhealthy or a greater risk than the risk of catching COVID are widely unfounded. I am concentrating on addressing individuals willing to listen to science, data, and evidence. I ask the Board to reconsider the current masks optional policy. With the health of teachers, staff, and students are concerned, I believe there is a duty to be proactive. The logical and moral course of action is to do what we know will help mitigate the spread. We want people healthy. We want our healthcare systems to not be overburdened. We want our students in school. Please, I'm asking each of you, do what is in your power to help prevent illness and school closures. Sincerely, Hallie Cristelen.
Thank you, Ms.
Hello, my name is Jenny Wright. I have three children enrolled in the district here, and we absolutely love our schools, our principals, and our teachers. Thank you for this opportunity to let us speak here tonight. For the past 10 years, I've worked as an early childhood mental health consultant in the community. Prior to that, I have worked in the field of early childhood and counseling in some capacity, working in hospitals, mental health facilities, and education buildings. In my time working in each of these places, I learned the importance of making evidence-based decisions, and when making difficult decisions, the importance of weighing risk versus benefits. I'm here because I have significant concerns, both medically and legally, for changing the current optional mask policy. My first concern is because of the ineffectiveness of masks against COVID-19. You've heard multiple times about the size of the virus, but essentially, wearing a mask to prevent catching COVID-19 or similarly-sized influenza would be like throwing sand at a chain-link fence. The overall evidence is clear, standard cloth and surgical masks offer next to no protection against virus-sized particles or aerosols. We have all seen these labels on the side of the mask containers, "does not protect against COVID-19." That is because the FDA Emergency Use Authorization for Surgical and/or Cloth Masks explicitly states the labeling must not state or imply that the mask is intended for antimicrobial or antiviral protection or related, or for use such as infection prevention or reduction, because it doesn't. Even the most esteemed medical journals admit their purpose is to calm anxiety, stating that "expanded masking protocols' greatest contribution may be to reduce the transmission of anxiety." It's been compared to that of a Lucky Charms or a Cymbal, only to remind us to take precautions. Which brings me to my next concern. Do the benefits of wearing a mask outweigh the risk? We have already seen that they are ineffective, but do you know the risk to kids wearing these masks? You've heard quite a few already. There have been hundreds of mask studies related to influenza transmission done over several decades. It is well-established fact that masks do not stop viruses. Part of that evidence shows that cloth face masks actually increase influenza-linked illnesses. The U.S. Center for Disease Control performed a study which showed that 85% of those who contracted COVID-19 were mask wearers. There are numerous other studies and reports citing, thank you, other side effects, which you've heard quite a few already. Health implications like headaches, reduction in O2 saturations after even just an hour of use, candida growth in the mouth, adverse skin reactions, including what has become known as maskne, mold colonization in sinuses, bacterial and fungal infections around the mouth, sore throats, and that masks even trigger allergies, which is interesting because I've heard a lot of people say their allergies were worse last year. Children have been repeatedly shown not to be drivers of this contagion. It is well-accepted that children have a statistically zero chance of dying from COVID. There are too many unknowns about how they're made, where they're made, ingredients like microplastics, chemicals, and being made in non-sterile environments that have not been safety-tested for children. I've also heard many educators express their concerns over how this negatively impacts a child's cognitive and social-emotional development. Children learning to pronounce words are unable to distinguish certain sounds with their teacher wearing a mask. Any intervention, especially one that is prophylactic, must cause fewer harms to the recipient than the infection. Since children have the lowest death rate from COVID infection, the cost-to-benefit of requiring children to wear an investigational face covering with emerging safety issues is especially difficult to justify. My third concern is what are the legal implications of requiring a mask? Involuntary masking is unlawful under well-established legal principles. Forced masking is a regulatory minefield filled with potential use for abuse. Forcing children to wear a mask, or similarly, forcing any non-FDA-approved medical product without the child's parental consent is illegal and immoral. Last year, last year was mentioned in a board meeting that they would rather not use funds for legal fees, but would rather the money go towards children in the classrooms, and I couldn't agree more. If there is any shred of evidence that indicates harm, this decision must be left to the minor's legal guardian, not the school, so that we can make the best decision for our own children. This decision should also not be deflected to the teachers. It is not their decision, their responsibility, or their liability. They are no more able to make a child wear a mask than they are able to give a child Ibuprofen. I understand, I understand people are scared, and I think we all want to do everything we can to help, but I want to do everything I can that is safe, effective, and legal. We know that masks do not help. Please show us that you are willing to fight for our children.
Thank you. Dr.
Thank you so much for having me come to speak tonight. I don't really have any prepared text. I only have experience, and I don't know that I'm here from, my kids are grown, I don't have any children in school, so I understand that these positions. What I'm here to do and talk about is my experience and experience that we have at our hospital right now in Garden City, Kansas, with respect to COVID. And I think it's very important for everybody to know in this room, COVID is a killer. If you don't think it's a killer, you're wrong. 650,000 people have died across the country, 53 in our community. I forget, I'm not sure what the number is across the state, but it's a significant number. It kills people. And there really isn't a whole lot out there at this particular point to stop it. And unfortunately, it's mutating, it's advancing, and it's getting, it's becoming more And unfortunately, it's mutating, it's advancing, and it's getting, it's becoming more of a killer. It's not going to get better. Certain number, you know, we had, you know, however, I guess it's been since December, people to be able to get their immunizations, and I think what he was saying in Garden City, I heard the number 42%. Hey, that is good. It's good that people have done it, but that means, you know, 56, 57% haven't done it for whatever reason. So therefore, it continues, and it continues, and it continues. And I, and I don't know that, I listen to the things that people are saying about the children and the issues, and it's low there, but I'm thinking, no, that's not true. We are seeing more and more young people get this. We've had people in their 20s and their 30s in the hospital, on ventilators in Garden City in the last two weeks with this condition. So it's no longer an old person's condition. Now, children may be vectors, they may be not. I've read some things that say that they are becoming that. I'm giving example of something that wound up happening in strep pneumonia, which is a, is the strep that, you know, most adults get for their shots when they're older, in their, in their 50s. Well, they discovered, the big studies, that the number of strep pneumonia cases were dropping in older people, and they're not now requiring these immunizations for older people because they were treating the children, which were the vector sport, and when they were young, and so fewer kids were getting it, and fewer adults were getting it. This is a new virus, a mutating virus. We don't really know what's going to happen. So what can we do now? We can all wear a mask to protect others. And I think that this is a very difficult thing today. I think masks suck. I hate my mask. I wear it every day. I've worn it when I've delivered babies, I deliver, when I've taken care of elderly people in the hospital, whatever it is, because I don't want to get an infection from that patient, and I don't want to give it to somebody else. Now, to me, wearing a mask is not that big of a deal, from the standpoint of if I can save another life. All of these people in this room, myself, as someone who wants people to be taken care of, can make, you know, can do whatever we want to do. But you all get the decision. You get the decision, decide, are you going to be able to help save lives? And if, and if these children and adults in this community wind up wearing masks, if we just save a few lives, that's a wonderful thing. You're never going to know, and numbers are going to know whose life that you saved. Is it going to be your parents? Is it going to be your children? Is it going to be your best friend, your wife, your husband? But if we can do something to help people, we should do it. And I'm thinking that wearing masks in the community is a good thing. I think it's, I agree with what these people say, but children having to wear these things, nobody wants to wear a mask. I don't, I don't get that. So today, I'm here for the patients, and, excuse me, the employees at the hospital, all the people that are working at the hospital that are having to now go through all this again, the respiratory therapists that see the person from the time they walk in the door until they take their last breath, they follow them from ER to the main floor to the ICU, the emotional trauma that these people are going through. And there are so many people in our hospitals, okay, the employees, staff, all through the hospital, not just doctors, not just nurses, dealing with this and confronting this every day. If we can do anything to lower the numbers of people in our community, I think we should do it. And I know it's difficult, and I don't have children, and I understand them not wanting to wear masks, but I want to keep people alive, because that really is what a physician is supposed to do. And I'm hopeful that you all can help with that process. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Booker. Trish Ebert.
This is my daughter Hannah Ebert. She's a sixth grader. And I have also a sophomore in high school, and he was not able to attend. He had other priorities or other things to take care of, otherwise, he would have been here to voice his opinion as well. I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of my children and as a frustrated parent. I'm here because making masks a mandate in our schools for our children when there is no longer a mask mandate in the general public is abuse to our children. I'm also wanting to make sure our kids stay in the classroom the duration of the whole school year, and I want to, and I will be explaining from a couple of points, and just maybe this will raise some questions as to what you are wanting to mandate. When I was forced to wear a mask last year, I developed a continuous cough and had a hard time breathing. After going to see my doctor, which is not Dr. Booker, I was put on a daily medication for asthma. I work out four to five, four to five times weekly doing circuit training and have never ever had to take a daily medication for asthma. Wearing a mask did cause me to have a respiratory issue. Once I stopped wearing the mask, I was able to come off the medication, the cough was completely gone, along with the shortness of breath. So now, how can others say that a mask does not cause, cause some kind of respiratory issue? We all know by now that coronavirus is spread through airborne respiratory droplets and also in the mucus and saliva in your mouth and throat. Throughout the pandemic, until recently, I worked for a busy dental office. Last year, from March to sometime in June, patients were seen that needed emergency treatment. We were fortunate to keep the doors open to provide treatment for patients while staying healthy. We opened office back up in June or July of last year, and we provided normal dental services, such as dental cleanings, fillings, along with many other treatments. With some dental devices, devices, droplets become airborne. With that being said, how can patients be seen in a dental office and still remain healthy when we are in a pandemic that is spread by airborne droplets? Doesn't make sense. What is one thing that people, all of us, seem unable to live without? This device. A cellphone that everybody has in their hands, everybody puts to their face at all times. You're right, it's your cellphone. A cellphone has more bacteria per square inch than a checkout screen or even a doorknob. A cellphone is covered in germs, from 17,000 to 25,127 bacteria per square inch. We see cellphones everywhere, at dinner tables, in restrooms, in the classrooms, even in doctors' offices, and in the hospital rooms. Not only do we put our cellphones to our face throughout the entire day that is covered with germs, but we also hand them to our children to play with. Just like smartphones, their large cousins, called a tablet, or the iPad that you have up there with you, are riddled with bacteria. My husband and I, we own a small business of cellphone repair, and we were very fortunate to stay open since we are considered essential workers for telecommunications. We have handled tens of thousands of phones over the last year, to year and a half, and have been blessed with good health. Now, how can it be that we can seem to handle thousands of phones covered with germs but can't seem to keep our children in school? It doesn't make sense. I didn't bring any data information with me tonight to share with you, since we have all done our own research, and the data that I have read will be different from what you have read. I use the very serious word abuse, because forcing our children to wear a mask that the virus can't pass through just isn't logical. I'm sure some, I'm sure we can all remember the most controversial, controversial topic about abortion, your body, your choice. However, for what, when it comes to COVID, it's no longer.
Time, time, Mrs. Ebert. Sorry, it's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. I'm Callie Dyer. I'm the Executive Director of the Finney County Community Health Coalition. The Finney County Community Health Coalition works to improve the health, well-being, and safety of the people of Finney County by collaborating to build a better community. I think we can all agree that keeping kids in school and learning is best for their education as well as their mental health. Collaboration from our county, community members, and with our school professionals will be the key to ensuring that our kids are able to have a safe and healthy school year. COVID-19 mitigation strategies will be a critical component to protecting our school staff, students, families, and our community. We recognize that no single intervention is perfect at preventing the spread of COVID-19. It takes layered strategies, working together to provide safe, in-person education. Children's Mercy Hospital in Kansas City recommends, at the most, important strategies, such as vaccination, consistent in current mask use, physical distancing, screening, testing to promote, to promptly identify cases, clusters, and outbreaks, ventilation, handwashing, and respiratory etiquette, staying home when sick and getting tested, contact tracing, quarantine, and isolation, cleaning and disinfection. The American Academy of Pediatric recommends universal masking because a significant portion of the student population is not yet eligible for vaccines, and masking has proven to reduce transmission of viruses to protect those who are not vaccinated. Many schools will not have a system to monitor vaccine status of students, teachers, and staff, and some communities overall have low vaccination uptake where the virus may be circulating more prominently. I would like to share some things to, to consider as you make your decision about what mitigation strategies should be implemented to Garden City Public Schools. The Delta variant is here and is more contagious than the previous strains of COVID virus, COVID-19 virus. Whereas last year, one infected person might, might have infected two people, the Delta variant infects person is passing the virus on to five. I'm sure tonight you have heard of many things, and I'm surprised you haven't heard about healthy, healthy eating, vitamins, and physical activity. But I would like for you all to remember that for many of our Garden City School District students, that their healthiest meals of the day come from their time spent at school. The additional expenses for fresh produce and expensive vitamins and supplements is a luxury that many of our families in USD 457s cannot afford. Good health should not be just afforded to the privileged members of our community. In 2020, USD 457 started school on August 31st. On this date, there were three individualized hospitalized with COVID-19, and in the ICU had a census of five. Three new cases of COVID were reported to KDHE in Finney County. USD 457 started the school year off with all students, staff, and visitors wearing masks. Remote learning in USD 457 students began on November 23rd, 2020. In 2021, USD 457 started school on August 9th. As this date, there were 11 patients hospitalized with COVID-19, and the ICU had a census of seven. 21 new cases of COVID-19 were reported to KDHE in Finney County. Schools that were mandating the wearing of masks by staff, students, and teachers in Kansas include, this was as of yesterday, USD 203, that's Piper, USD 229, that's Blue Valley, USD 232, DeSoto, USD 233, Olathe, USD 308, Hetchison, USD 383, Manhattan, USD 45, 475, Gary County, USD 497, Lawrence, USD 500, Kansas City, Kansas, USD 501, Topeka, and USD 5112, Out of Shawnee Mission. The question that needs to be asked by the school board and by our community is what are you willing to do to keep our kids in school? And for their learning to be as, as long as possible this year? What are we as a community willing to do to protect the most vulnerable in our community? We need to listen to our experts and look at our data. That's before us. Thank you this evening.
Thank you.
For your time this evening.
Ashley Waddell and Kristen Virgil.
I'm glad that you let me come up here and talk. I want, I want to start off by saying how masks and COVID has changed us. I don't like masks because they were hard to talk in, and I couldn't hear the teacher, and she or he could not hear me. The masks also made it where I couldn't breathe very well either. Masks have changed my life by making me sound like I was muffled whenever I had talked. It was hard to talk because it would get in my mouth and mess up, mess me up whenever I spoke. When I would have, whenever I would, whenever I would have allergies, I couldn't breathe and with my stuffy nose, and I would get yelled out for taking my mask down so I could breathe. I don't like wearing the masks because they have a huge hole in the sides that not even keeping me safe from COVID. Last year, I got sick one day and had, had a stomach bug. Because of my mask, I made it to the trash but was unable to pull my mask down in time to throw up in the trash. That disgusting memory will be with me forever. I like who I am and don't want to be called someone else, but this has happened to me several times while wearing a mask because people don't recognize me. I have two baby sisters, and when I put, would put on a mask, they wouldn't recognize me. I want to finish with telling you I don't agree with wearing a mask and follow what my parents tell me because I trust them.
I'm Kristen Virgil. I just wanted to start off with telling you thank you for all of your work throughout this whole entire time period. I know it's been difficult on all of us, and all of us have our own unique experiences through all of this. So I want to start back to last year in March, when we all came back from spring break and we found out shortly afterwards, we were going to be expecting a baby. And last year was difficult deciding what to do for myself and my unborn child and my eldest toddler here. I consulted with my doctor about mask wearing, and we, my husband and I, made an informed decision at that time. In the beginning, I made masks, I gave them away to our friends, our family, nursing homes, I even drove some up to the Scott County Health Department. I did, at that time, was our part. Masks would work, quarantining would work, cleaning would work, and yet, here we are, a year and five months later from our spring break, shut down, and still going over this matter. It has been determined that cloth masks just are not as protective due to the virus size and the holes in the masks. All that work I put into sewing masks for, all that work I put into sewing masks feels almost worthless to me. All the time I spent wasted, all the, the wear on my sewing machine because it broke from trying to sew ponytails into cloth. Now, as a, now as a taxpayer, I, I don't know on any of this, but just as a taxpayer, if you're getting some sort of incentive for any plan that is implemented by any government level, I feel that we should know. feel that we should know and that we should decide if that plan is truly what we need just because of money. And I hope that that is not something that is happening. If schools need hand sanitizer or cleaning supplies, I, as a parent, am happy to provide those supplies to promote a proactive approach to this virus, teach the kids to keep clean work areas, and how to properly prevent from spreading germs. I do not condone the use of a mask on my child, and she knows this, obviously. We have taken vitamins and supplements, and we are just as healthy as last year. We have traveled, and we are just as healthy as we were then, the year before. I just want our children to properly be taken care of and taught how to take care of their bodies in the first place, and we don't have to worry about whether to breathe in oxygen, which we need for our brains to learn, or breathe back in our carbon dioxide. I respect those who want to wear a mask, but that should be their choice. I have my own decision to make with my healthcare provider, and so do others. It has never been the school district's job as, or government's job, to be my child's healthcare provider, so please, don't be. Last year, all you implemented, last year you implemented a leveling plan and then ended up changing it during the middle of the school year, and it really disappointed me as a parent. And I just wish that that was not something that had happened, and I don't know what I should have done, but that is why I am here tonight, and I hope that this year is a much better year when it comes to things like this. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Tammy Hutchinson.
So I have this phenomenal speech written, and I'm going in a completely different direction. I want everybody in here who wants a choice, just stand up. These are the people that want a choice for different reasons. We're parents, we're students, we're rape victims. There is so much in this room. They want a choice. Period.
Thank you. Ryan Kennedy.
Thank you all for giving me a chance to speak tonight. This was a little bit short notice. I'll make it short and sweet. I've got three kids in 457. They hate masks. They're enjoying school right now. They did not enjoy last year. Talked to them a little bit tonight and told them I might be able to get up here and speak, and they were pretty excited about that. I'm speaking on their behalf in a bit. I just want to touch on three points. First of all, masks don't work. Second of all, masks are hurting the education of these kids. And thirdly, and maybe most importantly, is the freedom of choice. We're Americans. We have a choice to make our own decisions, and nobody can tell me what I can and cannot do with my kids, and it's not right that you guys make that decision for us. You want to talk about the CDC? This is about the CDC. CDC report admits mask wearing provides no real protection against COVID. That was written March 5th of 2021. I'm going to read it to you. It's pretty short. "On March 5th, the United States Centers for Disease Control and Prevention published a report admitting that face masks do not provide protection against the Wuhan coronavirus, COVID-19, and potentially worsen infection risk." Now, what they're saying today, I think this has gotten pretty political. Continue. "Outored by more than a dozen medical doctors and PhD researchers, the research found that wearing a mask or not wearing a mask produces roughly the same outcome in terms of the number of cases and deaths blamed on the Wuhan virus. Between March 1st and December 31st of last year, 2,313 of America's 3,142 counties were under a statewide mask mandate. County by county, data shows statistically insignificant, insignificant differences in health outcomes between masked versus unmasked counties." I'm not discounting COVID-19. It's real. Underlying conditions, bad underlying conditions, I know people that have died from COVID-19. I don't know one kid that's died from COVID-19. The doctor mentioned there's a lot of 20 and 30-year-olds that have COVID-19 in Garden City right now. I looked at the ballot, the stuff on the health deal, that's true. In fact, the highest percentage of infected people that tested positive are 20 to 34 or something. I don't know any 20 and 30-year-olds that are in USD 457 going to school. Continue on here. Second thing, masks hurt the education of our kids. There's an article by the Trends in Neuroscience in Education. Three points they made: Face masks impair recognition and face identification; face masks impair verbal and nonverbal communication; face masks block emotional signaling between teachers and students. I've talked to teachers in this school district that echo the same exact thing as what I just told you. It's a problem. It's not helping education. It's a nuisance. It's a distraction. Third thing I want to talk about was just freedom. I don't need this for that. You know, I can make my choices for my kids. I got three little girls. I'll tell you, they're the most precious thing on this earth to me. I would take a bullet for them. I would do anything for them. If I was concerned that my kids' lives were at risk from this, I wouldn't be sitting here talking to you like this today. Okay? There is a video, once upon a time, on YouTube that's since been removed, which shouldn't surprise anybody, but it was our hero, Dr. Fauci, stating that masks had absolutely no effect on stopping the spread of viruses. You can't find it anymore. It's not funny. I saw it once. In closing, I'd like to give a shout-out to Jackie Jigga, Kami McDonald, and John Weese. They'd be great members of this board.
Thank you, sir. Holly Chandler.
Good evening. I currently have four kids in the school district right now, a senior, sixth grader, fifth grader, and first grader. I'm also an instructor at Garden City Community College, where mask mandates are already in place. I would like to start by saying thank you to each of you. This is a very difficult situation, and I understand the position that you are in, so thank you for that. Well, I appreciate the board and Dr. Carlin allowing this time for opinions from parents about mask mandates. In reality, opinions are really not what is needed. Opinions on how to best protect our children and educators in our community during worldwide pandemic have gotten us to where we are right now. I think we need to listen to our doctors. We need to listen to the medical professionals. We know doctors like Dr. Booker, who have been in our community. He probably maybe delivered some of us and delivered our children and those kinds of things. Why would he be steering us in the wrong direction? Why do people that we have known all of our lives be telling us misinformation and not wanting to protect us as best that we can? I believe that each of you received information from Dr. Burns, with information from several medical agencies, with studies and factual information about why it is imperative to have mask mandates if we want our schools to remain open, and that is essentially the goal, to have our schools remain open. She also shared a petition from Kansas healthcare workers calling for mask mandates in school until the high level of transmission moves down, and then we can remove those mandates again. She was calling, these workers were calling for mask mandates in school that was signed by an overwhelming amount of doctors and medical providers in our community. Finney County is currently at a high rate of transmission, with only 42% of our residents having had the first vaccine and only 29% having had only one. According to the Garden City Public School website, there are currently 49 classrooms on yellow, meaning one student at least within that classroom has contacted COVID and been in the classroom. Forty-nine students in nine days. That's the classroom scenarios right now. I apologize, I lost my place. The Delta variant is much more dangerous to children. There are over 20,000 students in quarantine in Mississippi and 5,900 tested positive for COVID after one week of school. Our children under 12 cannot be vaccinated, but we are gambling their lives over misinformation. Multi-symptom inflammatory syndrome in children is increasing greatly with the Delta variant. This is a rare but serious condition associated with COVID-19. In June of 2020, the number of children infected with this with COVID-19 were 1,000. As of June 2nd of this year, there are now 4,000. It is increasing rapidly at this point. We do not know the long-term effects that this virus will have on our kids. We owe it to them to provide every single avenue of protection that we can. This is not only about our kids, but also about the teachers, parents, bus drivers, literally every person in the district. We have a large amount of classes already being taught by long-term subs. These are the same substitutes that would normally cover classrooms for teachers who become sick. What will we do when our teachers become sick? How will we manage to remain open? That is the most important thing. We want our schools to remain open for our kids and our students and for ourselves. We all know how it was to be home. If we get on top of it now and we're proactive rather than reactive, maybe we could have an entire year at school by just having maybe two weeks of masks and then go back, and hopefully everything has simmered down and it's not in clusters as we have right now in our community. We are one unmasked, unvaccinated person away from a mutation that will shut our country down. The current vaccination may not work to fight the next variant, and no one wants to go into lockdown again. That is where we are headed. We are asking that we follow sound medical advice and refuse to allow this to be a political issue. Most of us have at least had a disagreement with others about masks. Others have completely cut off friends and family members. Unfortunately, we have become divided as a community. Where will we be if even one child dies? Where will we be then? We need to allow the medical professionals to lead us out of this situation. I am asking this board to please listen to our doctors and their credible research and protect our most vulnerable, I'm sorry, our most vulnerable people, our children. Thank you for our time. Your time.
Thank you. That concludes the speakers that have signed up to speak for tonight. Dr. Carlin, do you have any comments?
Just briefly. First, I'd like to thank everyone tonight for coming and attending. Thanks to those who prepared and chose to speak tonight. This is a situation, an issue with a lot of differing and valid opinions. I would point out, I think President Wallace pointed this out, this was a regularly scheduled board retreat that the board elected to take time to hear from the community, so I'd like to thank them for that. And at this point, there is no recommendation or issue to be voted on or acted upon. It was basically an information gathering time tonight, so thank you.
Jennifer?
I don't have anything.
Janine?
I don't have anything.
Laura?
No, thank you.
Dr. Hannigan?
No, thanks.
Okay. I'd like to concur with Steve. Thank you to everybody for coming down tonight and voicing your concerns on this very important topic. I also want to assure you that everybody up here does not take this decision or this topic lightly. We all have a stake as a community member as well. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. I'm sorry?
Next board meeting.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, Laura. Next board meeting, the next meeting on the Board of Education will take place on Monday, August 23rd, 2021, at 6:00 PM in the board meeting room at the Educational Support Center, Garden City, Kansas. Now, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I move we adjourn.
I guess. Motion made by Janine, seconded by Laura. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, same side? Meeting adjourned.
How are you?
I did that every time. Good. I just went through about it, and I thought it was breakthrough COVID, but maybe just garden break flu. I tested.
He looked at me when he said nay, like I was going to vote against his last.
I'm just making sure there's no ghost over there.
Nobody's voting.
This weekend, to go see my daughter.
I'm sorry. Probably get one from Dr. Carlin. He might be able to, this is the low stone there. She might be able to eat one. Right down the front?
Okay, great.
I was talking to someone.
You got a basket to put in?
Yesterday, and I was like, I'm voting yes on everything tomorrow. You're not going to choose one. What do you mean? I'm like, for me neither. Okay.
A good exercise.
Ballpark them?
I might have liked to say, I understand we're not taking, we don't even have this at our radar, not at our radar, but there's no option that we even consider to rate. I guess now everybody's had their chance to speak.
Yeah, thank you. I brought enough for hours.
I don't want a retreat. And we had 12 that wanted to speak on no masks, but we gave them the option to provide comments in writing, and they'll get there.
Glad I didn't have to.
Take good care.
Good. Michelle Show was six to two weeks pregnant, and Mike tested positive. She did five times the last one.
We're all in the same place. TJ, how are you? Doing good?
Really?
How's it going? Working hard?
Well, I suppose I should be more careful.
I can appreciate that.
I mean, it was like three days. So, I mean, I wouldn't go to the scary test right away, but, you know, I guess I kind of feel like sitting here with my own.
I'm pretty sure I am.
There's no protection. That's awesome.
You'd be surprised. I've gotten a lot of ready.
You staying?